All right, the time is now 5:01. I'll go ahead and call the special meeting work session to order. And we'll go ahead and stand and do the pledge of allegiance. Okay, now we'll move on to item three, which is public comment. Public comment portion of the meeting is set aside for the public to address the board as a body. It is not time for board response or the public to ask questions. Do not infringe on the right of privacy of others and please sign in and spell your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. The chair may terminate an individual speaker if the statements are out of order or over three minutes. Any public comment? No public comment. Moving on to item four, which is the middle school boundary information. And this is the utilization forecast and capacity planning, and I'll turn this over to Mr. McHugh.
Thank you, everyone. So tonight, we scheduled a opportunity for Matt Cropper, school district demographer and contractor, to talk again about space utilization with a particular focus on the middle schools. So Matt was with us a little over a month ago to talk about the demographic work. And this is an update to that work. There's some information that's in your, in front of you. And hopefully Matt is online and can initiate his presentation. This is, this is Matt's PowerPoint.
Thank you, Pat. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can. Thanks, Matt.
Okay. Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Like Mr. McHugh said, I'm here to just to give another, talk a little bit about your utilization and capacity planning and talk about what our, our plan is, what we've done, and kind of where we're, where we're, where we're headed. And also just wanted to have an opportunity for you to answer any questions. Tonight's a little bit deeper dive into the utilization forecast and then talking a little bit about some redistricting work and process if, if we need to go there, which it's likely that, it's likely that you will need to have some sort of process for, for redistricting. But let's dive right into the presentation. I have some slides prepared just to talk and sort of help formulate our discussion. So the next, the second slide just talks just a little about me. We, I've got a lot of experience doing this for districts across the United States. An honor to be working with you guys and have done work with Missoula over the past several years and studying your district and, and its facilities over that time period. The next slide, but basically outlines just some overall objectives. And so that the district is considering a boundary study to help ensure that schools are efficiently and equitably utilized. In particular, this is related to your about, your middle school, your middle school boundaries. And so the recommended steps to accomplish these objectives is to develop, review of utilization forecast, which we have completed, to look at utilization imbalances and determine potential impacts on students and communities to really get a feel for what's the magnitude that we need to go into redistricting? How many students would be impacted to resolve our, our challenges, the challenges that you have? And, and then once you kind of get a good assessment of how much movement needs to occur, then we can determine how, what type of process to consider, how much public engagement you need to have, and, and how extensive that needs to be. So if you go to the utilization forecast slide, basically utilization forecast uses the historical and the forecasted data from the recent enrollment forecast from the last fall's demographic study, and then compares that to your capacity. I think I talked about these a little bit at the last presentation that I was in front of you in April. But this is more, if so, this is more of a recap on some of that. But the utilization forecast kind of gives you a look at what your, what your utilization looks like now and how that's forecasting the change over the next 10 years. Sometimes it can suggest that if you have an overcrowded building, if enrollment is forecasted to decline in an area, then overcrowding might be resolved. So it's good to look at current utilization, but also the long term to, to, to make sure you're as proactive as possible in planning. If you go to the next slide, you could see your utilization for elementary schools and you'll see a color key and, and this shows you basically the colors represent how crowded or underutilized buildings are. So there's, underutilization is shown in the darker, deeper greens. And the more red cell gets, the more overcrowded it, it is. And so, and so then you, as you could see here, Paxton is really the only school that needs to be addressed just in some form. It's not extensively overcrowded, but it is, it is over, it is going to, it's like nearing overcrowding next year. You know, 479 is what's forecasted in a 498 building, and that's supposed to go up to 513 at the end of the forecast period. And so it's, this does suggest that Paxton, there could be some boundary adjustments to help result, resolve Paxton's overcrowding because the, the schools that are adjacent to it have some available capacity. But it doesn't look like it needs to be a substantial side. I don't see anything on this table that suggests to me that we need to have, make some seismic adjustments district-wide, comprehensive at the elementary level. If you look at middle schools, you can see middle schools look a little bit different, a little, a little bit more. There's one, one year for Washington Middle where it gets to 106% at 670 enrolled. But you know, Washington is the, is the school that has, that sticks out to me as one that needs some balancing. And then you also, and you have Porter and Meadow Hill that have some available capacity. But it's important, really Porter is sitting right about where it should. If you compare that to the overall district average. And so this needs to be done in a way that doesn't, that doesn't end up overcrowding other schools, but helps provide relief to Washington. And so ideally, all of these cells in this middle school forecast would be pink, a lighter pink, which, which I think can be done with some adjustment. So we're talking, you know, 632 capacity and your high point is 670. So 40 students over capacity, nothing, nothing very substantial in terms of overcrowding or imbalances here. I think there's a question from the board.
Hey, can you just remind me what, what factors go into setting a capacity in a building? I'm just thinking about some of these schools imagining 500 kids at Lowell absolutely blows my mind.
Yeah.
So what are, what goes into setting that capacity number?
A capacity number is calculated by looking at classrooms, classroom spaces. And, and, and it's basically taking an inventory of the classrooms in the building. And then it's calculating a student, a per teacher ratio to those rooms. It's only looking at permanent capacity and it also sets aside space for resource and pullout. I think that you may have had, you may have mentioned this last time about Lowell, about Lowell feeling too big at 498 in that Lowell.
No.
Was it you who had concerns last time?
I just had concerns, I had concerns that the exped, that there's only expend, expected growing three to eight with 250 housing units going in the north side, west side. I was concerned that that number was off, jumping from 2023 to 2026, only going up by eight students with all that new housing development. And then Franklin relatively in the same boat with only three students adding in, just based on some of the, the housing units that are going into those neighborhoods.
Yeah, and I think that that's, it's, it's something to keep an eye on. I know that the housing, new housing is something that's definitely happening in Missoula. It's something that needs to be monitored and, and watched. It's, it's what it, what's, what's going on is that there's two different forces happening here. There's in migration from new housing that's bringing in students and increasing your enrollment. And then there's also aging of existing housing stock and, and as students are aging into the middle schools, there's not as many students being, coming in and replacing those in those, those households. So trying to find that balance between students that are leaving and then are aging, and then also students that are coming in. And I think that, I think that what this forecast tells me is that if, if you didn't have that, that in migration from new construction, your numbers would actually be, you'd be showing a more of a declining enrollment trend. But it's something, it's something to be mindful of and to watch certainly and see. I know that the demographic study had certain assumptions for housing and, and it would, and Dr. McKibben did look at the housing. But, but it's, it's something that, that definitely needs to be, be watched and see if there's anything outside of what, what's been expected in terms of that, that growth.
Yeah, I had a question also because when you were talking about how you say what the capacity of the school is, that's just quote numbers. But I wondered if there's any implications if you know that a school, for example, has more homeless kids or more immigrant kids such that you might actually want for pedagogical reasons to have slightly smaller classes and things of that sort.
I think it's definitely something that needs to be considered and, and the, you know, the needs of students are, differ from building to building. And based on socioeconom, and socioeconomics have, have, do have a play in, in identifying schools that do have greater needs. And so I think that, I think it's definitely a valid, a valid comment and a valid consideration to give a school that has a higher percentage of safe free and reduced lunch or that has a, a greater, greater needs, more space. And so I think it's definitely something that, like this basically utilization forecast shows you as a guide as it relates to the capacity. But then when you look at this and evaluate this, those are some things that are always discussed when we get into relief for schools or do we need to add more students to Lowell? Or do we need to take students out of Paxton? So when those types of conversations are all important part of this and that maybe because of the population that, that Lowell serves, that that school should not necessarily be close to 90% because they do, they do require space and to, to serve students that, in their, in their community.
Just maybe one quick clarification too. Smaller numbers in a building doesn't necessarily translate to smaller class sizes, right?
That's correct. You can have an underutilized building and your class sizes may actually be larger than a school that's operating efficiently. Because what you, you run into these bubbles with staffing. And you know, if you have a class of say 28 students, it's, it's, it's hard. You don't want to, you can't have two teachers of 14 for 14 students per class. And so you're kind of forced to have that one class, a larger class of 28. And so having a larger enrollment at a school gives you more flexibility to balance out your class sizes from, from, for a school, of a school that has say three or four different sections of each grade level. Where a school like Lowell has a small number of students. And so you do, that does limit your, limit your, your, your ability to be flexible and be able to adapt to changing grade cohort sizes. And so Washington, so as, from, from what I, what I could see, Washington and Paxton are the two schools that need to have some, need to take, have a closer look to try to figure out how to get them some capacity relief and, and give them some equitable space, some space to, to grow and also some space to, to operate currently. Because they're currently running really close, if not over, over capacity. Where Meadow, Meadow Hill, it's, the data suggests that Meadow Hill has some, has some available capacity and they could trade some area to get, to get things more close and more equitable in terms of utilization. And looking at your high schools, your high schools are, are also running on the high side. Big Sky is the one that certainly looks to be, to at 100% now, and it's not going to get any better. It's gonna, that school's forecast to go up about 130 students in the, in the life of this forecast. And so, but the, the challenge here is that your other high schools don't have much capacity to help out. If you look at Seeley Swan, that's really an outlier, as you know, that's a, it's a good distance away. And that, that's really almost needs to be in a separate line item because it can't really contribute for redistricting solutions. You certainly don't want to send any, any students to Seeley Swan because of the proximity and how far away that, that, that facility is. So high school's a little bit tougher. Sometimes we say that, you know, move, move students to provide capacity relief, but only do it without overcrowding another building. And so the challenge at the high schools is that you don't have a whole lot of space available. At the end of this forecast, you're gonna, the high school utilization overall is 95%. And that's including those 240 seats at Seeley Swan. So really your, your high schools are running close, are going to be running close to about 100% at the end of this forecast. And they're currently running, if you, if you take Seeley Swan out of the picture, around 95% utilization.
Quick question. Are the students who attend Willard included with their home schools in these numbers still? So that, that's a reduction in who's actually on campus? And also anyone who's been in the MOA, the Missoula Online Academy and not actually attending in the buildings?
Pat could probably help me out with this, but there's one of the things that you, this, this is enrollment as reported at the building. And so there are students that do participate in other programs. And then we see it all over across the country, you know, career, a career tech programs and those vocational programs. There's a good number of students that are at, off the campus for those types of programs and things like that. And so Pat, would you have any other, anything else to provide, input to provide on that?
Yeah, so, so those would include the home schools. So they should be, should be, I should say, the home schools. So we'll confirm that. But that's, that's how we do the enrollment count is like that. So it should include, the schools should reflect the students that are at Willard.
That was my next question is how many kids attend Willard? It's 200?
About 150.
150. So potentially these numbers are 50 less or more from each of the main high schools.
Yeah.
Which is a pretty big difference really when we're talking about, you know, these percentages of fullness. I mean, where if we're at capacity is 12 for 1400 and like the difference of 50 students would be a pretty big deal.
You have about 150 kids at Willard and this year we finished with about 70 kids in the MOA.
Because I guess I would, can I just ask that we, I think the high school is probably largely fine. People can move around a bit, whatever. But I think Willard should appear on there. And I think, I, I think enrollment's not the question. It's kids in the building. That's what we're. So I, I think that should be changed if you want to know what the kids in the building are.
Yeah, I'm just looking, I was just looking back at the demographic study to see how Willard was handled in terms of if it's actually, if students are counted at Willard or are the, or if they're actually counted at their homeschool and then they participate at, in the, the Willard program. So they are, they are not, they're not broken out in our, in our data. I think that, I think like, like Pat had said, those students are counted at their homeschool and then they are then drawn out for that, for that program. So we, we could, that's something I will take note of and we can look at Willard and maybe see if we can find program, tie the program codes for students attending Willard just to have some better clarification, understanding on where they live and within each zone. I think that, that could be something that could help give you some more information regarding the Willard population.
And I guess it's related to that from a building perspective and maybe there's some other cap. But does Willard have the building capacity to be bigger and is it capped by something else? I mean, that's.
That is about the capacity of Willard plus the staff that we have involved at Willard. So they, 150, 160 kids is about where they want to be.
Because of building?
Building and staff is.
We can add staff.
We can add staff, but the classrooms, I guess, would be the more.
Okay. I guess another question and then we get to it on the middle school. Are there some tiers at like when you get a vice, are there some staff-based levels that are worth knowing, I guess?
The typical ones are 550 in the middle school for another assistant principal, 400 for the counselor. So those are two, a librarian, I don't know if the librarian status, if they did, like a change in the last legislature, but I believe that was at 550 as well. So those, those are halftime positions, not full-time. Counselor would be full-time, but administrator would be halftime.
So I will, so this kind of gives us a roadmap for things to look at. We are in the process, we've been working with the student data. I wanted to make sure that we had the most, most accurate student data for working through this redistricting process. And we're at a point where I think in the next week or two, we're going to start looking at, modeling some potential scenarios to see what extent we will have to, you would have to go to, to provide relief. And like I said, we may not need to go into a very comprehensive redistricting process if it's going to be a minor adjustments that only needed. And so, and so once we, once we do this next step of assessing what impact it may need to, need to be, then I think that this is when we can make a determination and give you some recommendations on what type of process that the district should undergo to get this, this work done. So, but this, this process that I am going to review here is assuming that we want to have, that, that it introduces a level of public engagement that provides, that gives the public the ability to participate and give, and give input. And, and it's an open and transparent process. And this, it's not a very time-intensive process and it's not extremely heavily based on committee involvement. So you don't have to have a lot of volunteer committees working through this and things like that. But it's, it's a good process that lets planning team do some work. As you could see, I, we, we, we work with what we call an internal planning team. And this is the district's core administration and maybe even some principals and looking through options development. And that group does most of the options work and evaluating options. And then, and then we go to the public a couple times. And so the way I've, I've formatted this timeline is, is that we would go to the public in October to introduce the study in that there's, a study needs to be done. The team is working on maps to share with the public and tell that, and in this, this first public information session informs the public on how they can participate, where they can find information, how they can provide feedback in the timeline of, and some data that, that the group is looking at. And then in November, we would be preparing for, to share an option or a one or two maps, maybe even three if we feel like it's important to the public in November for their, for their input and consideration. Just to give us input as it relates to the, the options that are being shared. And this, this can be done onsite. We've done it both ways. Onsite it'd be best to put it at either a cafeteria or have a presentation in an auditorium and then have maps in a, in a flat area like a foyer or in the cafeteria. It's sort of a gallery walk style format where we present the, we present some information to the public and then you invite them to go look at maps and talk with, talk with us and staff around the maps and hear out what they have to say. And then a survey's kicked off in November to, to solicit some specific feedback from the public and get some additional input from them.
And then after. Remind everybody of the time that we do have stuff to go through. So I want to make sure you get through everything, Matt. But I like the discussion that's happening, but I just want to keep everybody on time as well. So trustee, would you?
Okay.
Um, is it safe to say when you're redistricting that every child that, so do they move in cohorts together? So do you ever split an elementary school to go to two different middle schools? Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, one of the things that we, one of the things that we always try to do is keep elementary schools together. And so if you try to keep a 100% feeder pattern, if you have to split a school, it's best to make that school split more balanced, like a 50-50 split. What you want to avoid is only sending like five or 10% of one school to a different middle and then 90% of the other resting students go to a different middle school. You want to try to, if you have to split a school, it's better to make that split more balanced. And I'd say anything, anything over 10% or under 10% is something that flags for us as something to try to resolve and fix. Just a little outline of stakeholder responsibilities. We work with the planning team to, to develop options. Like I said, the public is informed through a website and then also can submit comments. And then we also engage them at a public information session. And the superintendent works with the internal plan team and monitors progress, but really lets, lets the planning team do their work and, and just sort of more of an oversight role. And, but assisting the delivery of recommendations to the Board of Trustees. And then you as a board basically charges the committee with the responsibilities or this group with the responsibilities and then more high-level policy things, things that you'll have to consider and most likely have to make decisions on and things like grandfathering. What do you want to do if you have to move students or areas? Do you let them finish out or do you maybe let the final year finish out? And then, and then everyone else who's, who's aging in gets moved? And so those, those, those types of things are things that the district and the Board of Trustees will have to consider in terms of how to implement this process and get it, and get it underway.
I have a quick comment on that. So for the general public, he says inform through the website and you know, email, letter and other means. But then you said you would have two open houses. I actually think we should do three. When we did the elementary boundary study, we had three. But I would like us to have more face time in person with the public, especially when it comes to boundary studies. That's some I learned from the elementary boundary study. So just those quick comments.
Okay, absolutely. Yes. And so we do have a, we have a comment form, a general feedback form that we kick off right at the beginning when we kick off the process and that lets them provide input. But then the public information sessions, like you said, they're, they're the FaceTime, those, those engagement sessions. And so we can certainly do more than two, to, or we could determine how many you want to have and where to locate them so that you can make sure you get maximum input and participation from the public.
For those general public meetings, would you encourage the board members to attend? Or how would you do that? Because during the elementary boundary study, I believe only two board members came to those public meetings.
We always say that anyone is welcome to come to the public meetings. And I think it's great for the board to come and see how it's happening. But I, what I always, what I always say is when you come to the, to the public meetings, bring your public participant hat and, and, and not the board member hat. And so I know the people will probably be talking to you because, because, because you are board members and want to have questions about things. But, but when you come to the public meetings, come as a public member to, to learn about the process. And it's, it's really important for you as board to follow the process and see how things are going and to, to understand what's happening. But, 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 but also let the planning team and let the process take its, run its course and not, and not get too involved in the process.
So we've, you've used the word planning team. You've also used in the document. So we've, you've used the word planning team. You've also used in the document, the word committee. And I'm not 100% clear who is the committee and who is the planning team and how that committee gets assembled. If it's a group of, if it's a stakeholder committee, well, that's how we proceeded last time with a stakeholder committee and it was very challenging, no lie. And I'm curious as to your vision of who does what.
The committee and the planning team in this, in this process for Missoula that I have framed for you is the same group. The planning team is not, are not volunteer members of the public. The planning team are, consist of people from the central office who are in charge of student assignment and programs, transportation and facilities, and then probably have the principals for the middle school sit on this. And that would be more of what the, what would be comprised of the planning team or the, the committee in this particular process. It's not a public volunteer parent committee. It's more of a committee that's made up of, a group that's made up of internal administrators as, that works on the options.
Thank you for that. Yeah. Thanks for the clarification. I just want the board to understand that that will feel like a very different process to the, to the public than the way boundary was dealt with in our community not really all that long ago. And so it's, if, if in fact, this is how we proceed, we need to be really thoughtful about how this is presented to folks. No one likes to be done to. And that was much more of a ground up process and this would feel like a top down process. I'm not advocating, I'm just saying this is quite different.
Yeah, no, and I think that's why I asked you about public, more time with the public face to face, because when it comes down to it, they're going to come to us at public comment and make sure, our two superintendent and make sure that they're heard about, maybe why not one street over? Or, you know, it's just, it gets very in the weeds.
And I think we've done this process with, with parent led committees and we've also done it with this planning team component. And the key part to this is, is ensuring that the public has confidence in the process and that they know what's going on and they can provide input. And so it's important, we, we, we value transparency very greatly. And I think it's, and it's important to, transparency is key to a successful process. And sharing information with the public through the course of the internal planning team's work is, I, I feel is an important, important part of this. And then giving them the general feedback form at the very beginning where they can start to provide input and give us, and give us insights at the very beginning enables the public to, to give that input that they want to give and, and follow the process and understand what's happening and how things are evolving.
So I may or may not be alone in this, but to me, this is not an actuary process. I think we should, I'll just say it out loud right now to start the controversy. I think we should fundamentally shift the orientation of what elementary schools go to what middle schools. I don't think this is merely shifting a few blocks to get these numbers to match up in a pretty way. Now, maybe I'm totally alone in that, but to me, this process is not just a math process. There's some deep choices that underlie how we are currently structured that I really passionately disagree with. And I may be wrong, it may just be me, but for me, this is not just math, I guess.
No, I, I share your sentiment. I think, I think we should look at why all Title One elementary schools are going to CS Porter. Is it because we're compiling resources to put that everything there? What, and is that best practice? And what is the data supporting that? I think that's one of the big things I'd like to look at.
While I have long shared that exact concern, I think that is a challenging process to do in a top down way. And I think it's, that's why we have to have this conversation about the how as well as kind of where we get to. It's very disruptive to consider making a, you know, a big change. And folks are certainly tired of very disruptive. On the other hand, if you keep doing what you're doing, you're going to keep getting what you're getting.
And so just to comment on the conversations that have been, been had here, I think that some of those, those fundamental framework for schools and those types of things are things that, that should be discussed and should be considered. The, the focus of this group is usually is focused on boundaries. What, what, what can you do to boundaries to help resolve imbalances? But the, the higher level conversation about programs and other things at, and how schools are being, being populated and how their program is something that should probably, that, that could happen and sync with this. And it would be good to have some of that, some clarification on that prior to making boundary recommendations just so that it's possible that program adjustments or changes to schools could drive changes in utilization. And so you don't want to do, do too much on that front and then move boundaries and then have something happen that you had too many students moving or not enough students moving and have it not come out as you had planned it. And so I have another section in here on fees. It just breaks down our, the fee breakdown for this. And this is assuming that full process that I had outlined for redistricting in, in the prior slides. And it's important though, that what we're trying to do is be mindful of, of this. And we don't want to get into too deep of, too heavy of a process. We don't feel like there's going to need to be as extensive of time and work in the boundaries as, as we may have, may anticipate. So we've broken this into a couple of phases. And the first phase is just to take that initial look, see what the magnitude of this, of the scale of the impact could be or is likely to be, and then make the determination if phase two and a full public process is, is needed or recommended. So that's, that's all I have for now. I know you've asked some questions as we go, but I'd be happy to review anything else. And my next steps are to start diving into this, doing some modeling to see what, to what extent do we have to go to, to, to provide some balance of utilization at these schools. And then I imagine, once that's done, we'll, we'll have another conversation about next, what to do for next steps.
So I guess it's just to his point, maybe we bifurcate it out. But again, maybe just me, I would be advocating for changing the boundaries of who goes to the various middle schools, even if these numbers were exactly the same. So I guess I don't, it doesn't, it seems like a waste then for him to come up and say, well, it's, that's not what's driving it for me. I mean, yeah, that we should fix that too while we fix it. But so I guess to the point, do we need to decide if we're going to restructure over, before we then do the math on, on how that works out? Or do we do it together? But I, yeah.
I, am I the only one? Did you serve on the elementary boundary committee? I don't think you, you just visited. Yeah. So when we were going through that process, we kept saying we needed to do them together, elementary and middle school, because that was one of the big questions was talking about, well, if this middle school or this elementary school, if we change this boundary, well, where will they go? And what will, it was a, it kind of, we needed more. So I think that would be really something to look at.
I also, I'm kind of intrigued by the live in, attend analysis that's at the back of your slides here. We didn't get into that in your presentation just now, but you know, the fact that it looks like, if I'm reading this correctly, like, you know, 30, 40 students live outside the boundaries of both Porter and Washington and attend inside. And so there's, there's something, I feel like we need to know more about what's going on there because those kinds of decisions also impact how full a building is and who is attending where and why. And that speaks to programs sometimes and people's perceptions of schools and lots of those things. And so I, I do think this is a conversation that we don't actually have all the numbers to make all the decisions correctly, like the Willard question, the MOA question, the living outside of the boundaries, but actually attending that school for some other reason. Those things matter when we're talking about differences of like 30, 50, 60 students in being at 90% versus 98% or whatever. So I think this is an important topic, but I don't feel ready to commit to a path forward. I feel like we need to have more, I, I need to understand more what we're trying to accomplish and why.
Mr. McHugh?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to, to point out those slides that you're referring to trustee Decker, those were, they're, they were added to the mix, but there's some data that's not correct in terms of outside the district. So. Yeah, live outside. So those are out of district to tend in. And so that's, that data is going to be, that's not correct, basically. So the, the other piece I was going to mention is that in September, we'll look at enrollment and, and take another opportunity to look at this. And one thing I, I note, and it's very much, we share the data with, with Matt and then he does the analysis based upon addresses. And so we want to take another opportunity with this in the, in the, in the fall when the kids come to school with the data. And I can, you know, I know that on the high school side, if I look at our fall count and our spring count, we are 3958 and 3842, all kids. So the 4108 is, is a higher number than our fall and spring enrollment count. So we'll want to look in the spring at what that looks like. And that's all kids, Willard MOA.
Yeah, one of my concerns was that new House Bill 203 that passed that allows people to send their kids anywhere they want, provided, and I think there's, you know, words in there that says provided you have room, et cetera. But that's going to really, could do a job on where kids go.
Any other questions? Any other comments? Trustee Mercer?
Again, I don't know what the appetite is, but if, how do we ask and answer the big question of whether it makes sense to send all of our title schools to a single middle school? I think that's the fundamental big question. And maybe it does, maybe the benefits of having a single title middle school, which is why they did it, they did it on purpose for reasons that they believed in were helpful. For me, it seems like separate but equal and it seems immoral to me. Not to use too strong of language, but that's just speaking my truth. And I've, I'm willing to be certainly more patient about it. I do, but I want us to someday take that question on. And maybe I'm in the minority or whatever, but I would like us to address it straight up at some point.
I, I agree. I agree with you, especially when that, I think some of you heard me talk about this, especially when that school does not have a cafeteria. But this is also a time where we can talk about facilities. And I think that's one thing we, he hasn't mentioned, mainly the other properties we have or the other schools we have and what our options would be for those.
Trustee Mercer?
Just want to report on that, the facility committee, was it this week?
It was last Thursday.
But we, some good things about Sealy and some other stuff, but then I think we committed over the coming six months or so, Pat, to really get down to work and sort of like review the properties that we have and kind of bundle them into this one, we don't really have any good educational use for. You could sell it or trade it depending on what other thing you had going on. This one might be potentially, whatever, like sort of take stock so that the board down the road can at least look at the book and be like, here's what they have and have some work done about what their value is to us as a district or not. And so I think we, Pat, I'm getting ahead of us, but we, that's the general idea?
It is, yep. An inventory of our property and then taking a look at what the potential options are with it.
And really writing it down so that the board as a general can have some thought on what they were and what we want to do with them. And so if we come to a point that we want to do something with a building, we can look at the book and say, to do that, we'd be willing to divest ourselves of these. These are essentially just property that we could never build a school on. I don't know, but that we, I think we're committing to hopefully doing that work and getting kind of, actually producing something.
I think one of the things that Superintendent Lodge talked about too was maybe a program like Willard, but for middle school students. So in looking at the possibility of something along that, and I don't know if Mr. Lodge wants to elaborate on that.
I do. I would like to talk about that a little bit. We, we definitely need that. It's, it's become very evident this past school year. We're working on that. We've had two or three ideas just in general conversation pop up, but we do need to come up with some alternative plans for middle school kids and where and how. We've got some options, but it definitely needs to be sooner rather than later. And then just for the general discussion, you've got Mount Jumbo, the district has Emma Dickinson, we've got our adult ed program, we've got schools, which is unusual that we can talk about. And I think how the board gets wrapped up in that conversation, whether you, so you differentiate between schools and what we're going to use versus numbers and how we're going to balance, that, that's work that needs to be done. But it's odd that a district has a couple of options of facility. Usually that's not the case. But we've got two options that are pretty legitimate for the district to talk, take a look at. So I think that really, you talk about sending Title One schools to one location. It wasn't that long ago, Missoula had four middle schools. And so we're, we're, what are we going to, we reintroduce that concept, then how do we, how do we divide up the community? So it's really, I agree, it's a two different, two tone conversation.
I think I have, I have two general comments. The first is, is that we're seeing a decrease in our numbers in elementary schools, but we're talking about opening up a new middle school facility, just very rudimentary, which costs a whole lot of money in the facilities budget to open up a separate school. So I think in my mind, that I feel really interested about. And then the other thing is that what some communities do is that they have one school that tier three kiddos go to with the ultimate goal of graduating and going back to their home school. And we heard from the school counselors about how much our beloved tier three kids are struggling right now and how much that's impacting the school. And so I, I don't know, Willard is a choice, correct? And so, I mean, I'm all about choices and that sort of stuff, but, and this is, but our schools are, and our kids are really struggling and a supportive, safe environment for tier three kids with the ultimate therapeutic goal to return back to their home schools is something that I really would like the district to entertain.
Trustee of Gears?
Yeah, just for clarification here, are we deciding whether we're going to the next step? Or are we, have we committed to going to the next step? Or what were we at?
This is information only and we will talk about that with the incoming superintendent to my right. And when we, the other leadership, when we start doing agenda setting, but this, like Mr. McHugh said, September is when they really want to look at those numbers. So that's why we have the facility conversation going, but it's something that we're going to go down. And we have 10 minutes. So if we have any more questions or comment, let's knock them out. Oh, go for it. Sorry, sir.
I had one, I just had one comment to make regarding the board members' concerns about Title One and sort of more of a socioeconomic component. One of the things that we do look at is not only building capacity and utilization, but we also study what the demographics of the schools are. And so we can look and see, not only are there imbalances in utilization, but we can also identify any imbalances in, say, a free and reduced lunch percentage or those types of components. And, and that's something that we can, that we can evaluate and assess to see if, if changes need to be made to make that more equitable. So we could look at equity in terms of utilization and also demographics through this process.
Trustee Decker?
I know a source of some really interesting demographic and readiness information about incoming kindergarteners that would inform that conversation for elementary schools. Just saying.
Any other final questions or comments? Mr. McHugh?
I was just going to thank Matt for appearing again and, and going through this, this, this really interesting data and for pulling it together. And. And he seemed to learn something more every time we, we look at it. So it's, it's good to dive into it, and, and thanks, Matt, for, for being here and, and allowing us to ask you a few questions.
Thank you.
All right, so the time is now five fifty. We'll go ahead and adjourn this special meeting. Thank you. I'll go ahead and call tonight's school board meeting to order. Tracy has taken roll call. We'll go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, now onto item three, which is to review, revise, and improve the agenda. Is there any trustee who'd want to move or remove an agenda item? Seeing no changes, is there any public, oh, is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Moved by Vice Chair Hobins, second by Trustee of Garris. Any public comment on the agenda item? All in favor for approving the, tonight's agenda? Unanimous to all trustees present? Onto item four, to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting of June thirteenth. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Vice Chair Walker Andrews, second by Trustee of Garris. Any trustee comments? Any public comment on the agenda item? All in favor for approving the minutes for June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present? Now we're onto item five, which is public comment. Public comment portion of the meeting is set aside for the public to address the board as a body. It is not time for board response or for the public to ask questions. Do not infringe on the right of privacy of others. Please sign in and spell your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. The chair may interrupt or terminate an individual speaker if the statements are out of order or over three minutes. Any public comment tonight?
We do have public comments tonight. The first person is Robin Abe Schoss.
Yes. Hi, I'm sure that some of you are wondering why I'm here yet again, to give public comment at tonight's meeting. I'm here again tonight because neither I nor any other members of the public who attended and spoke at the May twenty-third board meeting, or who signed the letter read into public comment at that meeting, have received any indication of when or how questions and concerns regarding student safety and emotional well-being and communication with parents around these questions and concerns will be addressed. It has been made clear at the start of the public comment period of each meeting that the board will not respond or answer questions raised during public comment. While I very much appreciate that some of you have acknowledged that concerns have been raised at these meetings, there has not been any sort of public statement acknowledging the parent guardian concerns raised at these meetings, or letting MCPS families know how they can be involved in discussion around these important issues. That's why I'm here again tonight. I'm hoping that my presence will remind you that there is a public behind the word "public" in Missoula County public schools. You might ask why other people are not here tonight. They might be home with their children, unable to find childcare. They might be coaching a youth sports team. They might be working long hours or a second job to help keep food on their family's table. I am here to remind you that they exist and to ask you to reach out. Close to two hundred people signed the letter read to the board on May twenty-third. That letter shared concerns about the need for clear MCPS policy regarding student safety, about the growing culture of violence and bullying in our schools, and about a lack of open communication between schools and families. It ended with a request to engage with MCPS board and administration on these concerns. I repeat these concerns tonight because I continue to hope that MCPS will do more than listen as these concerns are read. I hope that there will be communication with families around them. Some of the qualities we hope to see in our students, empathy, compassion, respect, begin with listening, and continue with dialogue. I hope that we can begin to model this process for the children and families who attend Missoula County public schools. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
All right, now we'll move on to item six, which is our community connection. And we have Roxanne Wechel.
Wykel.
Wykel, and Danette Fadness, who are part of Be Smart.
And I do wanna introduce Roxanne Wykel. She's also Be Smart trained, so we're glad to have her here with me tonight. All right, Be Smart is on the board. Be Smart is a program developed by Everytown for Gun Safety Support Fund to bring together parents and all adults concerned about kids, guns, and safety. Thank you for allowing me this time tonight to talk about this vitally important information. I am Danette Fadness, she/her/hers. I'm a child injury prevention educator. I'm the Be Smart Montana lead and a QPR certified suicide prevention instructor. We all want kids to grow up happy, healthy, and safe. We each have the right to make responsible decisions about how we protect our homes, our families, and our communities, including whether or not to have a gun in our homes. If we can prevent one, even one child gun death or injury, it is our responsibility to do so. Be Smart is a program designed to help keep our kids, schools, and communities safe. It is heartbreaking, the fact that in the United States firearms are the leading cause of death of children. This is a public health crisis. More than eighteen hundred children under the age of eighteen are killed every year, an average of five children every day. When children are killed with guns, the majority of these deaths, fifty-four percent, are homicides. That's a thousand children per year. Additionally, nearly seven hundred children die by firearm suicide each year, and a hundred more are unintentionally shot and killed. We're here today to talk about how we can prevent tragedies like these. A shocking four point six, I can't get closer to this. Oh, this moves, thank you. That helps. All right. A shocking four point six million children in the United States live in a household with at least one loaded, unlocked gun. While school shootings and mass shootings typically make national headlines, almost all unintentional shooting deaths occur in the home. And the Secret Service found that three-quarters of school shooters acquired their firearm at their home or a close relative. So listen, I know that this is an emotional issue, and we may come from different walks of life. Many of you may be parents, and some may be gun owners, and some may not. Some of you may have a personal experience with guns, and some of you may have even been impacted by gun violence. We believe that most gun owners want to be responsible gun owners. We're here today to talk about what all of us, gun owners, non-gun owners alike, can do to make sure children and teens do not have unauthorized access to guns. I wanna take a few minutes to talk specifically about what the consequences of unsecured guns look like. As you see in these stories, when kids gain access to a gun, it can turn deadly. You may not have heard of all of these incidents, and really, there are far more, but I couldn't add them all to this presentation. In the story about Grayden, he was a nine-year-old boy whose life was cut short because a twelve-year-old boy had access to a firearm. The principal of his school shares her story about that day when the police came to her to identify Grayden. She will never be the same. The family will never be the same. The entire community will never be the same. My grandkids attend Missoula County public schools and have been in multiple lockdowns, as you all know, over the last few years. Each time they text, "I love you," we're in lockdown, I'm scared. Each time, not knowing if this time it's going to be real. One of these times, my daughter waited, texting my grandson repeatedly with no response. After forty-five minutes, she received a message from a phone number she didn't recognize. This is your son's gym teacher. We're hiding in the gym. Your son is safe. I will protect these kids, no matter what. All these stories show the fallout of when young people get their hands on unsecured guns. No story is quite the same, but all are tragic and all are preventable. We can all take action in our homes, in our communities, to keep kids safe. So even if you don't have a gun in your home, or if you do and you know that you're already practicing secure storage, what can you do right now? Together, we can learn to be smart. Next slide? Let's start with S. Secure your guns in your homes, your vehicles, and your garages. Thirteen million households with children contain at least one gun, and the majority of children in gun-owning homes actually know where the gun is stored. Montana is a hunting, hunting state, and we know that about sixty-five percent of our households do have firearms, which makes this message even more important. I talked to families about the importance of responsibly storing the firearms when not hunting, due in great part to the impulsive nature of suicide. In Missoula County in twenty twenty-one, seventy-nine percent of our suicides were completed by firearm. A responsibly stored firearm should always be stored securely, which means that it's inaccessible to kids, and make sure children never have, are never in the presence of an unsecured gun. Remember, hiding a gun is not securing a gun. M is for modeling responsible behavior. Every law-abiding adult has the right to decide whether or not to have a gun in their home, but you can't rely on curious kids to not find a gun. Kids know where their parents store their guns, and more than one-third reported handling their parents' guns, many doing so without knowledge of their parents. Nearly a quarter of parents did not know their children had handled their guns in their home. It is always an adult's responsibility to prevent unauthorized access to guns, not a curious child's responsibility to avoid guns. Talk to your kids about gun safety, but remember, that's a precaution, not a guarantee. One study found that young children who go through a week-long safety training, gun safety training, are just as likely as those children with no training to approach or play with a gun when they find one. Modeling responsible behavior means that smart adults make sure that kids don't have the opportunity to access guns. That said, you can't control every environment your child is in all the time, so you should teach them not to touch a gun if they come across one real or pretend, and give them the tools to get out of a dangerous situation and to alert an adult. As an adult, it is your responsibility to do everything you can to prevent them from getting in a dangerous situation to begin with. As I stated earlier, there are approximately four point six million kids in the United States living in a household with at least one loaded, unlocked gun. And that's why you need to ask about firearms in others' homes when you, where your child visits. The A in smart. Asking about guns in the home should be as natural as asking about any other safety issue. If it seems awkward at first, try making it part of your general safety conversation. You might ask via text or email if you're uncomfortable at first. You can't just ask if there's guns, but you have to ask how they're stored, because I talk to families all the time that tell me a loaded pistol in the top of the closet is a secured firearm. So let's talk about recognizing the role of guns in suicide, the R. Access to a gun can mean the difference between life and death. Montana has been in the top five states for suicide rates over the last forty years. We're currently number three. We have a lot of work to do. Nationwide rate of firearm suicide is fifty-one percent. Here in Montana, it is closer to seventy percent. Suicide can be a very impulsive act, and in as little as five minutes, from thought to follow-through with access to fatal means, we are losing our youth. The latest statistics on youth suicide include the youngest was eight years old. Being smart and practicing, practicing responsible storage is vital. Most people who attempt suicide do not die unless they use a gun. In fact, ninety percent of suicide attempts with a gun result in death, a much higher fatality rate than any other means of self-harm. This contributes to the fact that forty-one percent of child suicides involve a gun. It is important to note that seventy percent of people who survive a suicide will never attempt suicide again, which makes this conversation so very important. As our children get older, you may wanna consider taking a look at your storage methods. If you're using a simple cable lock now, you may wanna get a gun safe. We all know how curious kids can be, so as they get older and more resourceful, you need to act accordingly. The National Youth Survey conducted by the CDC showed that twenty percent of high school students had seriously considered attempting suicide in the last year. One study showed that forty-one percent of adolescents in gun-owning households reporting having easy access to guns in their home. As we discussed earlier, research shows that secure firearm storage is associated with a decreased risk in child firearm suicide. These are some pretty fantastic resources here that are available, and I want to bring your attention down to the, the green area there. It's the Crisis Text Line. You can text HOME to seven four one, seven four one, and my goal is to get that number into every young person's phone. I've done a pretty good job, but hopefully you'll help me spread the word. And what I can share is, the other day, I was in a meeting and we were talking about the Crisis Text Line, and one of my colleagues spoke up and said that their sixteen-year-old son was beginning to have a panic attack at school. was beginning to have a panic attack at school. And he went and texted 741-741. And within five minutes, they were able to help bring down his anxiety, and he was able to go back to class. And he felt like he'd made a connection, like he had made a friend. So that's a vitally important resource that we need to get in the hands of every young person. All right, so T is tell. That is the power of being smart. For the purposes of this presentation, I want you all to help me tell Missoula County Public School parents about why it's important to be smart, so we can keep all our kids safe, healthy, and happy. So what can Missoula County Public School Board do? These are some great ideas here. You can adopt to be smart as a safety major in the parent handbook. Provide online resources for responsible storage on the Missoula County Public School website. Send information home to all parents and educate parents about the importance of securely storing firearms they own. In some school districts across the country, parents or guardians are required to sign a letter acknowledging that they have read the information about being smart. You could encourage your PTAs to host Be Smart presentations or provide and, not or, and provide Be Smart resources and gun locks in your family resource offices. Thank you. We have a few pieces of material if anybody's interested.
Yep, thank you. You can leave those with Tracy.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you so much for being here tonight, and I would say that I did invite you guys to join us, and I appreciate the steps that you shared that the school board can take. The worst part of being a school board trustee for me has been seeing lives ruined by unsecured firearms in people's homes, and they bring them to school, and their futures are cut short by that. And I don't want to see that again. So whatever we can do to educate the community, to offer resources to the community, I'm behind. So thanks so much, Danette and Roxanne.
Any other trustee questions, comments? CNN, all right. Thank you so much for your presentation. All right, so now we'll move on to topic seven, which is reports and announcements from Superintendent Lodge. I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you. The legislative session finished up, as you know, this winter. And so the work that we've looked at, that really Micah and Tracy have looked at, is that we have about 30 policies that need to be revamped. So I think you're going to see some policy work in front of you in the next few board meetings, all related to what happened this last session. So I'm just kind of giving you the heads-up that you will become part of quite a few discussions of policy. I assume most of them are going to be model policy from School Board Association, but all a reflection of what was passed in this last legislative session. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. The only other comment I have tonight is just to thank you. You gave me an opportunity a year ago to be the interim superintendent. I decided to take the word interim off because it sounded better. So, but no, thank you very much. It's been, I don't know what it's been. It's been my honor, my privilege. It's been fun, believe it or not. It's been interesting. There's been some moments. But not everybody gets an opportunity to do this, and I just want to thank the board for the opportunity that you gave me, and it will be something I'll take with me forever. So I'm kind of signing off in a way, but anyway, thank you. It's been a privilege. I really, really, really enjoyed it. Thanks.
So we have a special presentation for you. So we have a plaque, not a plague, a plaque. I don't know if you guys caught that in my email. I had people respond. We have a plaque for your service, and Vice Chair Hobins has it, and a card for you. And we want to thank you for your service to Missoula County Public Schools.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, everybody. Very appreciated.
All right. And then now, we'll move on to item eight, which is the consent agenda. There is no board discussion for consent agenda items as they are routine. Is there any board member who wishes to move a consent agenda item off? Not seeing any. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items? Moved by Trustee Decker. Second by Trustee F. Garris. Oh, that was for elementary. Sorry, we got that. There is no board discussion. Is there a public comment on the agenda item? CNN, all elementary trustees in favor for moving, for approving. Sorry, guys. This has been a day. Passed by unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Onto the secondary. Is there a high school motion to approve the high school consent agenda items? Moved by Vice Chair Walker Andrews. Second by Trustee Wallach. There's no board discussion. Any public comment? CNN, all trustees in favor for approving the high school consent agenda. Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Now we're on to topic nine, which is new business. So A is the High School Retirement Fund Budget Amendment 2023-20S. And this is over to Mr. McHugh.
All right, thank you. So this is part two to the process of adopting a budget amendment. Our first was the Budget Amendment Proclamation. That resolution was shared with appropriate parties and posted. And now, this next step is for the board to approve the resolution adopting the budget amendment in the retirement fund for the high school. This will allow us ensure that we'll be able to meet retirement payment obligations, which I believe we will without the budget amendment, but this will provide the safety net. If we don't use the funds, the funds will go back into the reserve account. You're allowed to carry 20% as reserves, and we have 17%, which is 825,000 at the end of FY '23. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Any board questions? This is a high school motion. So I'll take a high school motion to approve the recommendation. Moved by Trustee Decker. Second by Trustee F. Garris. Any final comments? Any public comment? All trustees in favor for approving the recommendation for the High School Retirement Fund Budget Amendment? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. And on to topic two, which is the Elementary Retirement Fund Budget Amendment 2023-13E. And it's Mr. McHugh tonight, so back to you, Pat.
This is the same background, except for the elementary district and the retirement reserves that we have are 16% currently in the elementary district. So the request is to complete the budget amendment with the resolution that's attached to the agenda as page 21.
Any board questions? Vice Chair Walker Andrews?
You said we currently have 16%. If we were to spend all this, then what would it be?
Well, the 16% represents 1 million, so this is 325.
Any other board questions? CNN, is there a motion? Is there an elementary board motion for approval of the recommendation? Moved by Trustee F. Garris. Second by Trustee Mercer. Any final trustee comments? Any public comments? All elementary trustees in favor for approving the recommendation? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. On to topic three, which is the Transportation Budget Amendment 2023-14. And this is an elementary board motion. And this is back to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right, thank you. So same concept. In the transportation fund, this is a budget amendment. The transportation fund is for to-and-from transportation. So we had, again, pulled this amendment out of reserves. The elementary reserves are not great. You're allowed to carry 10%, and we have 6.3%. This budget amendment would pretty much wipe out the reserves if we use all of this budget amendment. So it's something we'll want to build up when we talk in August. The rationale for the amendment, we talked a little bit about it last time, the additional routes that were added, specifically one for the rattlesnake. Then we also had a preschool transportation, increase in transportation costs resulting from student populations that were full right out of the gate. So usually, we experience at least three months before we're full, and this time, we were full right away. So we didn't add. We usually wait till we have those routes when it's full. This time, we were full right away. And then the other reason I mentioned last time was some low estimates of budget need that we made at the beginning of August. So that's why we're asking for the budget amendment.
Any questions from a trustee? Trustee Mercer?
So transportation's permissive levy, though, right? So if we had accurately predicted this, then we could have just collected it, but we can't collect it now. Is that...
That's exactly right. So transportation fund, you want to have reserve built in because special ed routes are unpredictable most of the time. We're pretty steady on the regular routes, but the special ed routes are pretty unpredictable.
Any other trustee questions? CNN, and this is an elementary board motion. Is there elementary trustee who would motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by Trustee F. Garris. Second by Vice Chair Hobins. Any final comments by trustee? Any public comment? All elementary trustees in favor of approving the recommendation? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. And on to four, which is to approve the Comprehensive School and Community Treatment Agreement with DPHHS. And over to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right, thank you. So we approved a similar agreement to this with DPHHS and OPI last year or two years ago, back when the rules changed about how we're reimbursed and how we are reimbursed requires a match. And so as part of the process here, we provide a match as a district based upon services, CSCT services that are rendered. The, as a result of what we pay as a match, then the Department of Public Health and Human Service will reimburse us for the services that are rendered, and it includes return of our match. So there's an intergovernmental transfer that takes place that's really outlined in Sections Four and Five of this agreement. And it's really about process and about meeting an obligatory match by the state, and it's actually what we pay. We get the funds back in a different form, but we get the funds back, and then the service provider is paid. So the services that are provided are the Comprehensive School and Community Treatment Services for students. This is some of the Tier III services that are provided in the schools. You've probably heard, I know you've heard, that there are fewer services of this type that are provided, based really largely upon the new model of reimbursement. So these services are reimbursed at hour increments at $96. So they used to be, they didn't used to have that hour increment. And so that means that to be, I don't want to use the word profitable, but in order for them to recover costs, then they have to serve a larger number of students. So it's limited the number of teams that they can provide in the schools. And so we have two primary service providers, Western Mountain Health Services and Missoula Youth Homes. They work in a number of our schools, but not all of them. And I'd say they used to be in all of them, but they're in Hellgate, Big Sky, Sentinel. They're in Meadow Hill and Porter and Lowell. And they were in Hawthorne. And so it's been tough, I think, based upon the number of students really, to have a presence in all of the elementary schools. They may have other teams in some of the elementaries, but those are the ones that are recently. I know the youth homes is in Lowell School. So this is a contract we're required to sign in order to continue with the services. You'll see that it's prepared by DPHHS. It's very similar to the contract we had with the OPI. We've just pulled out OPI's responsibility. We had three layers of government. Now we have two, and that's the big change here.
Trustee questions? Trustee Decker?
Pat, am I right that students also have to have a diagnosis to access this kind of service because of the way it's reimbursed? So it's not duplicative of like the behavior interventionists that we have on staff?
That's exactly right. And then it's Medicaid reimbursement, too, so it's qualification.
Any other? Trustee Decker?
Sorry, yeah, just to follow up on that, just planting a seed maybe as we think about the, you know, budget over the next couple of years. Wouldn't it be great if we could figure out a way to supplement some of these roles so that folks who don't have enough hours to be based in the building based on this reimbursement model could be matched in some way by district funds to actually be a presence in the building and support kids? It's like, there's maybe something blendable as some of our positions that are full-time might need to come to have. I mean, I'm just trying to think. But certainly, the kids need it, right? So.
Any other trustee questions? CNN, this is a full board motion. I'll take a motion to approve the recommendation. Moved by Trustee Decker. Second by Vice Chair Hobins. Any final comments? Any public comments? All trustees in favor for approving the recommendation? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. And now we're on to five, which is to approve short-term lease with Child Start Incorporated. Over to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right, thank you. So this agenda item is really a continuation of a lease authorization the board provided for our Head Start program as they moved out of Willard, sorry, out of Whittier following a flood over the Christmas break. The folks in that program moved quickly and moved into Cold Springs Elementary and are now occupying parts of that building under a lease that we initially set up to run through July and, or through June. So what we're recommending is the continuation of that lease through December based upon anticipated completion of some of the improvements in Whittier. So at this point, we're looking at to continue that lease, to continue the authorization for possessor-y interest for the Child Start program.
Any trustee questions? This is a full board motion.
I've got a quick question.
Oh, elementary, sorry. Yeah, trustee Witcher.
Is there any indication that they're going to choose to stay at Cold Springs and not go back to Whittier? Do they like it better? Do we have any, is that a possibility?
I would say it's less of a choice of theirs and more of what the board and the district is supporting.
They like the single level, correct, at Cold Springs?
I'm sure.
All right, so this is the elementary board motion. Is there an elementary motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by Trustee Decker. Second by Trustee F. Garris. Any final trustee comments?
So who's paying for Whittier? Are we, or...?
It's insurance proceeds that are picking up the cost. It's our insurance carrier.
Any final trustee comments? Any public comment? All elementary trustees in favor for approving their recommendation? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. And now on to six, which is the approved purchase of student and staff replacements. Over to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right, I've got backup here because Brian Coniff, our Director of Technology, is with us. But if you look to page 28, Brian put together a detailed description of the various devices that are being replaced. So this follows a bid through the NASBO organization. It's a purchasing program, so the bidding happens at the state level, and then we can take advantage by making, identifying what we need, and then getting the best price. So this is something that our tech department typically does. This is for replacement devices. So they're, I believe, HPs. And you'll see what the quantities are for students and staff between desktop and laptops. And these purchases would be funded with our tech fund, which is, the purpose of that fund is to replace these types of computer or technology devices. fund is to replace these, these types of computer or technology devices.
Any trustee questions? CNN, this is a full board motion. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by trustee Witcher, Wallach. Second by Vice Chair Hobbins. Any final comments? Any public comment? All trustees in favor for approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. And now we're on B, which is personnel negotiations policies. First topic is termination of the nineteen-hundred series policies, and this is over to Superintendent Lodge.
So the policies that you see listed were all temporary emergency policies, as is listed in the write-up. They were there because of COVID, and they were all enacted during that time period. Since COVID has basically ended, we have not been using them. They've already stopped. School Board Association is recommending that we, we have an official vote, more of a formality, really, just to make sure they're eliminated from our policy books. So really, you're just, you're, we're recommending that you approve the termination of these temporary emergency policies so that we are official with MTSBA. So that's all there is to this tonight.
Any trustee questions? Trustee Decker?
Can we, like, keep these in a very, like, easily findable place? Because anybody who was around doesn't want to re-have to invent them. So let's keep them somewhere where we can really know that they're there and, you know...
We'll call you, Russ. Any other trustee questions?
I'm not going to comment on it.
All right, so this is a full board motion. Is there a trustee to approve the recommendation? Moved by Vice Chair Walker Andrews. Second by Vice Chair Hobbins. Any final trustee comments? I have one. So I want to, my comment is I want to thank Dr. Watson and his administration team for during this time. It was a pretty interesting time, and I know Grace and myself, plus the other ones, and then Cohen and Jen came on and Jeff, we were the ones that were sitting there during the public comment time and all of that, and I just want to thank all the other previous trustees who sat with us, and we did hear all the public comment, and did, we really did a lot of work during this time, and I just want to thank everybody for that, especially Dr. Watson. So any other comments? Any public comment? All trustees in favor for approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. So on to topic two, which is the update, update the Safe Return to School and Continuity Service Plan, and this is back to Superintendent Lodge.
So what you just voted on is connected to here, because we have now eliminated these officially. We need to update these to our Safe Return to School Plan, all part of the ESER monies and that all was taking place over the last three or four years. So this just needs to be posted on our website, and if you look on page forty, you will see the chronology of the Safe Return to Schools Plan. It's pretty involved, and what we're basically doing is just updating it, and the rules of the game are that we have to post it, make it public, and then we are up to date. So it's, again, somewhat of a formality because we're already doing it, so we're a little behind in the officialness of posting this on our website, so this catches us up to speed.
Any trustee questions? CNN, this is a full board motion. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by trustee Decker. Second by trustee of Garris. Any final trustee, oh, wait. Is, we did that, we did that. Okay. All those in favor for approving the recommendation of the safe, upon, update the Safe Return to School and Continuity Service, please indicate yes by raising your hand. The part I forgot was public comment. Again, that one always gets me. All right, so now we're on to ten, which is the Board of Trustees. When, the first topic would be the MTSBA resolutions, and this is over to Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
Okay, this is just for information. I think at our next meeting, we'll vote on these particular items. Everyone should have received from the Montana School Boards Association a full rundown of all of these principles and guidelines with lots of yellow and lots of strikeouts, et cetera. So what I did for tonight was just try to give you on page sixty-five the, the major things that are being talked about. So one will be for us to approve or not Sue Corrigan as the president-elect and Crystal Zentner as the vice president-elect, and I know that Micah can talk about Sue Corrigan because he knows her, if need be. Next are the principles and guidelines, and I thought I would just say what has changed among these principles and guidelines. So number one, they've simply changed wording to personalized learning because that seems to be what the legislature is calling student success. There's a new emphasis on the control of schools by community elected boards, taken right out of the Montana Constitution. Principle three, they've simply changed student to child. Part of that has to do with bills that require, that allow children to move to wherever they want to, so I think they're just saying student, I mean, sorry, children who reside in an area rather than talking about them as students. There are no changes to the principles and guidelines about the American Indian education. Number five, they're changing the wording from separation of church and state to the balance between church and state because of the Supreme Court of the United States recent approvals of, I don't know how to, how to say it, but freedom of church and state versus individual expression of your religion. And then number six, there's no substantive changes. In terms of the strategic advocacy, rather than talking about just two years down the road, they're trying to expand it to talk to four years down the road to try to be readier for all kinds of things that come up at the legislature. In terms of the gap analyses for the next session, what they're saying is what we want to do is make sure that we broaden the awareness of changes in the law, so all the different kind of policies we have to talk about. They want to advocate for targeted interventions. They are going to initiate some legal challenges, in particular, House Bill 393 and 362. One of those is a charter school bill, and one is the special education bill. And then they want to broaden the awareness of the public and certainly school boards of things that they think will come up again in the next couple of sessions. So this last session, there was a lot of talk about changing the voting schedule for school boards. It didn't pass, but the thought is that it'll probably come up again. There's a whole slew of bills that didn't pass that are likely to come up again that deal with human sexuality, et cetera. 501, which was to allow OPI to select who can, we can go to for textbooks, failed, but it might come up again. So basically, they're just saying they want to keep people aware of these things. And then their goals for 2025 that they want approval of are to preserve previous progress and then try to ensure the structure of shared authority that's outlined in the Montana Constitution. So at our next meeting, we'll vote on these items, all six or seven of them, and then either Mr. McHugh or I will forward that information to MTSBA.
Any trustee questions or comments? Trustee Mercer?
This is just a foreshadowing. I guess I will be curious more explanation. I've never heard the phrase balance between church and state.
I voted against it when it came up.
I just would say I don't, that's just, I don't, I've never heard that phrase before. I've heard the other one a lot, and so I'm curious more, I guess.
Well, if you, if you look at, like I said, what they sent to you, and you read all of the yellow and the red and the X's out in the past, and you know this, you will know this case, I can only vaguely remember, something like Ferguson or Goldfarb or something that was used before for separation of church and state has now been sort of replaced by the Supreme Court when they decided that you could decide whether to bake a cake for somebody or not. So that's why they're talking about the balance.
Any other trustee of Garris?
I just want to say how great of a job you're doing as our representative.
Oh, thank you, sir.
I've never been more informed with, with, which I love. So excellent job. I know it's more free work, but you're doing a wonderful job.
Any other comments or questions? Any public comments?
Can I say one thing? One nice thing about being on this, the representative for us, is I get to say, we don't have those problems all the time. Missoula doesn't ever get like that. So, and that we have, and I say it all the time, our board is very collegial, you know?
I love that. We are. All right, so the time is now six fifteen, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.